Good evening, all. Today is January 2, 2023. This is the annual reorganization meet of the Edison Township Board of Education. It is 7:00 PM. My name is John Toth. I'm the school business administrator. Thank you all for coming. I hope you've had a wonderful holiday. First item up is the certification of election results. We have Mr. Joe Romano with 9,265 votes, Ms. Shannon Peng with 8,763 votes, and Mr. Vishal Patel with 7,904 votes. Next item up will be the administration of the oath of allegiance. Mr. Romano. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Joe Romano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Joseph Romano.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member?
For the office of member.
Of a board of education?
Of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter?
And I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS-19?
Pursuant to RS-19? (laughing).
Call 4-1?
Call dash 4 dash 1?
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense?
Due to conviction or a crime of offense.
Listed in?
Listed in?
NJSA?
NJSA.
18 colon?
18 colon.
12 dash 1?
12 dash 1.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Impartially and justly?
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office?
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Aye. State your name.
Aye. Shannon Peng.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To do the same?
To do the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
To the governments established in the United States.
And this state?
And this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye. Shannon Peng.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office member?
For the office member.
Of a board of education?
Of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter?
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to?
Pursuant to?
RS-19?
RS-19.
4 dash 1?
4 dash 1.
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime or offense?
Due to a conviction of crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA?
Listed in NJSA?
18?
18.
Colon 12 dash 1?
Colon 12 dash 1.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Impartially and justly?
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office?
Perform all the duty of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Vishal Patel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state?
And this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Vishal Patel.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualification.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member?
For the office of member.
Of a board of education?
Of the board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter?
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS-19?
Pursuant to RS-19.
4 dash 1?
4 dash 1.
Nor disqualified?
Nor disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime or offense?
Due to conviction of the crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A?
Listed in NJSA 18A.
12 dash 1?
12 dash 1.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially and justly?
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office?
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One more time, I'd just like to congratulate all our incoming board members and the sitting board members. I look forward to working with all of you over the next fiscal and school year. Okay, I will now call roll. Mr. Bural Patel?
Present.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Present.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Present.
Ms. Peng?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Romano?
Present.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Present.
Ms. White?
Here.
We have a call. Please, I'm sorry. Mr. Romano? Yeah, I called. You called? Yeah. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will now read the opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting the interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Next item, I will now take nominations for president.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Joe Romano for president.
I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Shannon Peng.
I'd like to nominate Shannon Peng as well, second.
At this time, I'd like to take and make it be known that I am not running for the Board of Education president.
Noted, Mr. Romano is not accepting nomination. Currently, there's one nomination for Ms. Peng for the position of board president. Do I have others?
I have a second.
Okay.
Motion to close the nomination for president?
Second.
Closed. You have your voting ballot sheets in front of you? Thank you. Okay, I will now read the ballots for president. I have a signature and a vote cast by, that is Vishal?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel for Ms. Peng. I have a vote cast, a ballot by Mr. Mohin Patel for Ms. Peng. I have a ballot cast by Ms. Peng in the name of herself for Ms. Peng. I have a ballot cast by Mr. Bural Patel for Ms. Peng. I have a ballot cast by Mr. Rivera for Ms. Peng. I have a ballot cast by Mr. Schneider for Mr. Romano. I have a ballot cast by Mr. Shi for Ms. Peng. I have a ballot cast by Ms. White for Ms. Peng.
It's only Joe.
Joe. Sorry, Joe. I have a ballot cast by Mr. Romano for Ms. Peng. Congratulations, Ms. Peng, for being the Edison Board of Education president. I look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you. Thank you for all the board members that support me. Thank you.
Thank you for relieving me of my duty. I'll bring you your... You know, does she have a word?
I did. Thank you. I'd like to move to the nomination of the vice president of the board.
I nominate Joe Romano as vice president.
I second that nomination.
Do I have another nomination?
I nominate Virginia White.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, board members, if no, no more others, no others, right? So let's just...
Motion to close the nomination of vice president?
Motion.
Okay. Now let's just write your votes, board members, on your sheets and hand it over to... Collect them? Okay.
Okay, I will now read the ballots for vice president. I have a ballot for Ms. Virginia White, for Ms. Virginia White. I have a ballot by Mr. Rivera for Mrs. White. I have a ballot by Mr. Romano for Mr. Romano. I have a ballot by Mr. Shi for Mr. Romano. I have a ballot by Mr. Mohin Patel for Mr. Romano. I have a ballot from Mr. Schneider for Ms. White. I have a ballot from Ms. Peng for Mr. Romano. I have a ballot from Mr. Bural Patel for Ms. White. And I have a ballot for Mr. Vishal Patel for Mr. Romano. Congratulations, Mr. Romano, on your vice president.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, John, can we move to the next item nomination, approval of the parliamentary procedures?
Yes.
John, you gonna read it?
Would you like me to read it? Yes.
You want to read it? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. New to the procedure.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Do we need to read it?
So, yeah, approval of parliamentary procedures. So be it resolved that the Edison Township Board of Education in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to the extent consistent with state law, policies, and bylaws of the board, will be guided by Robert Charles L. Vorder.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
Motion? Motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please? The second.
Joe seconded.
Joe seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yep.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, next, adoption of the state mandated code of ethics.
Whereas Title 18A, colon, 12 dash 24.1, the code of ethics for school board members requires that a board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board members serving the Edison Board of Education acknowledge that they have received a copy of the code of ethics for school board members and understand the responsibilities they are undertaking as members of the Edison Township Board of Education.
I believe we'll need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes. Roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
John, before we move to the public comments?
Will everyone please acknowledge their ethics forms that they have been given, sign, and submit them to me? Thank you.
John, yeah, I'd like to, before we move to the comments?
Okay.
Like to bring two resolutions. So in order for the board to function well and make the right decisions, the board attorney needs to provide unbiased legal advice to the board with a reasonable rate. So with that said, I'm going to introduce the following resolution. I'm making a motion to authorize our business administrator to immediately issue a RFP for legal service for general counsel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Ms. Peng? Mr. Mohin? Would you like a roll call or a voice vote? Roll call?
Roll call now? Okay. Roll call, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a roll call on a read-in resolution for the ad for the posting of a RFP for legal services. Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Another one.
Okay.
So the board must be physically responsible for our taxpayers. Given that the district has an average daily balance of $45 million stored in the bank, we need to look for banks that's going to provide us with the best interest rate possible. Some bring another resolution. I'm making a motion to authorize our business administrator to immediately issue a RFP for bank depositaries. Do I have a second?
Second.
I had a motion by Ms. Peng, and it was a second by Mr. Romano. Thank you.
Roll call, please?
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's all. And we'll move to public comments resolution only. Banker, please? Oh.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Thank you.
And Joe Romano, congratulations. And Shannon, stop me if it is not a topic that on the resolution. The resolution is on the ethics. So I would like you two guys to talk about the ethics you guys took the oath. But Mayor Joshi has announced replacement of the board library of Clara Barton, and he's replacing it with a special ed center. And he said clearly that he worked with three BOE members, including Brian Deveron, board leadership. Can you establish a committee of the whole to investigate what all has been surrendered from the board of ed to the township and the mayor and why the ethics are violated? Only three people from the BOE are included. So I think the liar should be able to comment that how the township mayor can comment that, oh, I have alignment of the BOE, but he took the alignment of only three. So BOE became a political party or BOE is nine people member? And I just wanted you to review that ethics, that how a mayor can make the announcement that he aligned with BOE and he only worked with three people. Thank you.
Thank you. We're definitely looking into that. Thank you. Anybody else? Resolutions only? Seeing now, so move to adoption of state mandated, no, what's that? Resolution. Resolution approved of 2023 meeting dates.
Motion?
Motion. Second.
Who's second?
I second.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Mr. Shi and a second by Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Designation of depository 2022, 2023 revised signatures?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was a motion by Mr. Shi?
Yes.
And a second by Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board member open discussion? You want us to start?
Madam President?
Jury, go ahead.
Yeah, just want to say congratulations?
Thank you.
For being the board president and looking forward to work with you. And third term board member, well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President? First and foremost, congratulations on your appointment as president of the Board of Education here in Edison and also winning. Congratulations to Vishal for his elected official, now you're officially on the board. And congratulations to Joe Romano for also being on the board, elected as vice president. We look forward to working with all of you, and I want to wish the whole public of Edison and the United States a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mo.
Go next.
Oh, Bureau.
So congratulations, Shannon, for your term and being president. Congratulations Vishal Patel for being on the board, look forward to work with you, and wishing everyone Happy New Year.
That's him.
Vishal, go ahead.
Well, congratulations Shannon for being President, and Joe for Vice President. I want to thank the township, residents of township for electing me to represent them and the students in the Board of Education, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Sorry, Brian.
No, it's all good. First of all, congratulations for the three of yous for being part of this Board of Education again. I think this is going to be fun, we're going to have some good times with this. Congratulations being President, President of the Board, Joe, Vice President, and Happy New Year to everybody. I think this is going to be a successful and a great school year.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Board President.
Doc, go ahead.
Congratulations. Joe, congratulations. Vishal, congratulations.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make one comment. You noticed that Mr. Romano was sitting next to me, and he said, I don't want you to vote for me, and I voted for him anyway. It's because I told him, I said, even if you tell me, even, I said, even if you tell me, don't vote for me, I'm still voting for you. And I told him that, and I'm a man of my word, and I knew that at that point, Ms. Peng had the presidency, but Joe, I told you I was going to do it, and that's what I did. So with that said, I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you everybody for coming, because this is exciting to see so many people enthusiastic about the Board of Ed. So thank you. This room usually isn't this filled, so, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ginny, go ahead.
Okay, they say everything happens for the best, and this is a true thing always, you know. I wish you well to all of our new board members, and to Shannon, you know Shannon, I think so highly of you too, and to Joe. Congratulations to both of you, and to all of the rest of you, happy, healthy, prosperous New Year.
Okay. Thank you, Ginny. Is there anyone else? I do like to make a statement, sorry. Now I'm making a three-page, it's a one-page, so bear with me a little bit. So let me just begin by wishing my fellow board members, our school administrators, educators, staff, parents, residents, and most important, the students, a very, very Happy New Year. I want to thank my fellow board members for placing their trust in me and giving me this opportunity to serve as the Board President. You all have your own talents and specialties, I believe, in collaboration, and I do look forward to working with each of you collectively. Together, I'm confident that we can tackle and solve the issues impacting our students. No issue is too big or too small for us to work on. The New Year present us with new hope and start, a new start. This year, the board must ensure long-term stability for our district. That begins with hiring a qualified, energetic superintendent that is committed to our district, who knows our schools and understands the needs of our students and staff. I respectfully submit that we must also double down our effort to solve school overcrowding in a way that provides our students what they need, but also mindful of our taxpayers. This include resuming the discussion of Stilton School. I'm hopeful that the township administration will have a substantive dialogue with this board to move this plan forward. Also on overcrowding, I would ask the board to engage in discussion relating to the long-due implementation of a automatic, automated residency verification process. There are also several curriculum changes made last year, such as middle school AB schedule that impact our students and foreign arts and foreign language programs. Our parents and our educators have spoken. I just want to say, we heard you, we will reexamine the curriculum change and rectify as necessary. Thank you. Similarly, several committees were eliminated last year, including transportation and special ed. Twelve thousand students and their parents rely on school transportation every day, and it's critical to restore that transportation committee, to oversee that it's well done. Also, ten to twelve percent of our students needs individualized special care by our district. We must restore the special ed committee so their, their needs is no longer ignored. Finally, I ask my fellow board members for their support in making our district more transparent. From the issues on district finance to operations to the curriculum being taught in the classroom, it is just so important that our parents and residents have accurate, complete, and timely information. So these are just a few of the many issues that we will have to work on. I'm eager to hear from my fellow board members, as well as administrators, educators, and residents, on how we can continue to improve our district and ensure that each student has the tools and resource necessary to succeed. After all, that is the only reason that we are here. Thank you. Non-resolution, anything?
Oh, oh, Vanke.
Sorry, didn't see you.
Good evening, everyone. And first of all, now, thank you, Joe Romano, for showing the integrity, even though the opposition would like to split the current board. You know, you guys has been united. So the person who voted for you, Doug, didn't vote for her, for the Vice President last year, or President. So I would like to see, you know, would like to have Jenny as a Vice President, or President last year, she didn't get the votes, but this year, all of a sudden, there is a love and affection for you. So thank you for standing up with a lot more integrity, and I think you won our hearts big time. So coming to, you know, the last year, I think the BOE has pushed our students five years back. We lost a lot of things. We sold our souls to the township. The grounds, we couldn't manage our grounds, we handed out them over to the township. We didn't even know how to manage our roads. We didn't even know how to take care of the special education. And I think even the board attorney, I have great respect for him for his experience, but the law firm that he came from, Bush Law Firm, is the county's associate neighboring township mayor. See, how much we have sold ourselves to the Democratic Party, MCDO, and other people. And I, Shannon, I truly respect, and Mr. Joe, you guys will stand up to all these bullies and make the BOE independent, and test the character of the independence of the BOE, and they'll ensure that the kids are standing first than individual, personal, political growth. So having said that, so thank you, Shannon, for bringing back those, removing those AB, bringing back those AB schedules, and I hope you'll also not forget the lapse of the biology. And I also hope that, you know, you will not curtail the public speaking with that threatening statement that Dogg has brought up last year, by spending forty hours with a lawyer, five thousand dollars has been spent, just to stop one person, Kristo. They wanted to stop Kristo coming here. In the process, there used to be hundred people, eighty people used to come, and they stopped, only four or five people used to come and talk. So they scared the people away, because they can sell the BOE to the township. And I hope this new leadership will make sure that this tax base money that is paid for the students will be spent only on the students, only. And now I'm going to bring this mayor's, there is a rumor out there, that mayor felt that the old BOE leadership will be retained, so that they'll be able to sponsor the special ed using the BOE funds. And unfortunately for them, fortunately for taxpayers, they didn't get this oath. So now, they're replacing the Clara Button Library, they didn't know where they're putting it. And now with his wife's idea, he's starting some special ed center. Look at this scenario. The library has been removed, we don't know where it is going. But the announcement is already announced, without having the BOE knowing, and I just learned that without even council knowing it. See, the mayor didn't even inform his own council, and entire BOE, and he took a call, doing something that is related to the special ed. If it is only for the gym and extracurricular, I'm fine, but if it is going to overlap with the BOE, you guys should actually stop and actually send him a legal notice, that he doesn't have a power to take out anything from the BOE's responsibilities, because he's trying to step on your toes and take over that BOE's special education without informing the council and BOE. And at the same time, please make sure that you put a policy of creating a committee of the whole. The mayor became a mayor because he created a committee of the whole to throw somebody out, and he became a mayor. Now create a committee of the whole, and get rid of the people who are corrupted, and who are selling themselves to the mayor. And the last but not least, I am being told that mayor is sending the legal notices season decision to the people, using the public money. I think we are going to counter that, and at the same time, he is planning to give a two-hundred K salary to his family member by establishing that special ed center. So I truly wanted you two guys to pay attention, use your legal authority, and actually send the notices to the mayor, that dude, you are for the township, leave the BOE alone. If you come near to the BOE, and I think you guys have to send him the season decision letters as well. And at the last but not least, please give us back the rebuttal time, which was stolen from the people, because you guys are here because of the public, and you guys cannot take over that rebuttal time, because the last year, they have, they won the five seats because they broke the slate that was one previous year. I hope this slate, you guys will be together to ensure that democracy will prevail, and whatever we lost last year will be restored, and you guys will march forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanke, yeah. Personally, I, I, I don't think we should have any limitation on the speech by the public, because you guys are here to speak, and we are, this is our responsibility to, to hear your concerns, to hear your voice. But that's just me. I, I will definitely talk to the other board members to discuss this six, the rebuttal time and the six-minute limit. And also, I, I remember that we have, we have a barrier for this year that separate the, the board and the audience. I also, I, I think the board member should be approachable, so I would also like to see that barrier be removed away, the, we'll discuss that also with the, my fellow board members. Go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to have a resolution made to stop the six-minute clock. I don't know exactly the legality, or what we have to do to stop that six-minute clock. Also, the barrier that stops the public from approaching the board, that's got to go. I seen it here, and then I seen it at the town council. I could stand here for twenty minutes and talk to you as a board member, but you, the public, the people that elected us, can only speak six minutes and then have a three-minute rebuttal. That's wrong. You are the people. You voted us in. We are the representatives of you. The students in our district are our main goal. The only thing that we hear is when you come here and you talk. So please, I ask the board members to help me make a resolution, or a motion, to remove the barrier, and to allow that six-minute clock to use for something else, but not in this board chamber, and not to sti, to stifle the public. You, the public, deserve to be heard.
Well said.
Thank you.
So the barrier, I don't think we need a resolution. People, we all, everyone is Edison, everyone is a happy family.
Already removed.
Yeah, removed now. You don't need a resolution for that, like, why do we even need this?
Board President.
Yeah.
I, I believe that, because I looked into this last year, I think the way the policy is written, you, you do have the power to do whatever you please with the public comment period. There needs to be public comment, but you as board president, I don't want to speak, I'm not the attorney, I'm sure that the policy committee or our attorney could weigh in, but I believe that you would have the ability to change it as you wish, as you, as you were elected as our president, so.
Oh, okay. If that's true, I, I do, as Joe said, or said, Joe, I do like to remove that six-minute limit or the rebuttal, if everybody else agree.
We have to make, do we have to make a vote? No. No, you could simply decide we didn't vote last year.
Okay, that would be perfect.
Effective immediately, right?
Yes, effective, effective immediately, yes. Thank you.
Do you have a motion on the table? If I have a motion on the table, I'll second the motion.
She doesn't need a motion?
Oh, to remove that thing, I already removed it without, without a motion.
That's fine. Motion to adjourn, if there's no other, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, there's, there's comments. Apologize.
Anthony Diamrin, twenty-five Wiley. First of all, congratulations, Mrs. Peng and Mr. Romano. I believe what this gentleman just said, regarding the mayor, you know, it'd be crazy not to think that he wants control over the, the Board of Ed in some capacity, and that's for a host of reasons. Meanwhile, you know, this is, while on the council, he didn't lift a finger to help with overcrowding, so I find that pretty ironic, but pay very close attention to that. Also, I think the residency thing that you brought up earlier is a great idea. It's about time. I mean, if you don't live here, you should not be here in our schools. And it's, it's just that simple. So there's nothing taboo about that, just, just goes, you know, that they shouldn't be in our, in, in the school. So one other thing is Stilton School, I don't know where we are with that, if somebody could look into that, I don't know if, if there's a, if we're getting closer to, you know, where the Board of Ed is getting closer to taking over the school, or getting it back, or not, but maybe something to look into. And one last thing is, you know, everybody pays attention to the Board of Ed members and stuff. One, one group of people that I think people should pay attention to is also the state Board of Ed members, and who they nominate, and who these people are, because if you do your own research and due diligence on the state Board of Ed members, some of them will shock you with their ideas and thoughts are, and obviously it trickles down to the locals, local Board of Ed. So it's, it's something to pay attention to. So again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, twenty Netherwood Circle. Only three things. The first and foremost is when you were reading your school, school board members' ethics, is the most important one is D. I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are run well. Run well and not to be run. And that was something that I always kept very important when I was on the board, and I only ask that that be first and foremost in all of your minds. Number two, one of the biggest items for a board member to hire is a superintendent. And I feel that this has to be a priority, to start posting, if not already talking about it, and to move forward to getting a permanent superintendent. No harm. I think your smile would be bigger if they hired one, but I truly feel that it's important that a district this big have a permanent superintendent. And number three, yes, for years we've had overcrowding in the schools. There is a plan for multiple schools to be expanded, and I hope that that is not implemented any slower, that it moves forward with our district and benefit the children. Those are your big, three biggest items, and I hope that those are the three biggest in all of your minds. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Board President.
Okay, the gentleman in blue.
Good evening, everyone. Wish you all a very Happy New Year. So Shannon, congrats again.
Thank you.
To see you smile. We saw you crying, so it's better to see you smiling, okay? So second thing is, my eyesight is good, but I don't see Shivi here. Is she here somewhere? Sorry. Okay. Oh, she's out, right? She lost the election, right? Thank you. There's, while I was a small kid, my parents have taught me, from where I come from, pride goes before the fall. Some of the heads have been rolled out, and some of them are still waiting to be rolled out, okay? Both on the Bo, Board of Education, as well as in the township as well. It's going to happen, because the pride has reached to the, to the, to the extent of it, so it's going to suddenly come down. We're going to witness We are going to witness that in front of us. And few other heads will also roll out. No, don't worry about that, okay? Please do the good job. That's what the township has elected all of you. And we have seen a lot of shenanigans and shenanigans as well as the treacherous maneuver, maneuvering the Board of Education by external forces. That should stop. I would, I believe that the Board of Education, the newly elected members have a, a good standing as well as good judgment to ensure that such kind of maneuvering is going to go away and a lot of transparency will be brought in. That's where we are looking towards the leadership of Shannon Peng, Joe, and Jerry, okay? So to show, to showcase, to, you know, demonstrate the leadership and ensure that we gain the public trust once again, year after year, election after election. Then I really appreciate, you know, for Venkatesh as well as Joe standing by the, you know, the, the morals to get away from this six-minute stupid thing which the earlier board, again, had their ecstasy, right? So they reached the, the highest level of pride, what they had. They put in all these barriers. So take out the first one itself. I really appreciate that, okay? And I saw that someone was telling like, you know, hey, I voted for you. Do they need you? Do they really need you to, in your vote, to be elected for this? Stop this crap, right? So we don't need it, okay? So your thing is done. Go back home, relax yourself. There are some other people who are in control, they'll take care of it, okay? So now, I'm going to go across the three things, very important three things. We're not here to gain the ground, but I would request that there are three, or three important main issues have impacted the education community very bad last year. The first one is the bio labs have been taken out. The second bio lab has been taken out for the students. I know that Shivie has voted for that while her kid was in the school. Of course, she also brought her kids into the harness program by doing the backroom back, maneuvering. That's another thing, I'm going to keep it aside. But my request is that at large, it's going to impact a lot of kids who are studying right now to lose the second bio lab. My request is, the first resolution as and when it is possible from your end, to please reinstate it ASAP. The other thing which, the second issue that also has impacted is the bus fare has been, you know, increased, okay? I'm not sure how many people remember that. The bus fare was increased last year. Could you please take a look at it and see if you can, you know, adjust that back or roll it back at least, like, you know, give it a, you know, good thought about it because it impacted a lot of families. We, it was impacted, it was raised amid the COVID situation wherein people were looking for help, whereas like, you know, people have been overcharged with this bus fare increase. My request is, please look into that and see if you can roll back that change. Then the, uh, the overcrowding issue, right? So we had a lot of discussions happen, like, at least two years back while Jerry was the president. So Jerry had all, you know, the, the good, as well as the harness thoughts behind to make sure that we can get in a second school or the building to be constructed out. That plan has to be brought back in and have to be really thought about it to make sure that we have a solid plan before at least like the three years term, since we, all of us will be here to make, to have the overcrowding issue addressed, at least tactically, because this is really, really going, really, really going, you know, out of the hands. Please try to help us. The first and foremost thing is, I'm not sure how much we, even if we do the residency check, I'm not sure how much we are going to address that. Probably we're going to avoid eliminating some of the students maybe, but it's not going to help us the overcrowding. The problem of it is there are two facts, right? Two factors which are impacting it. The brainless thoughtness, thoughtfulness of the township in, increasing the, the residency or the, increasing the condominiums across the Edison ship, that has to be stopped. That has to be stopped. The second thing is also the, we don't have an adequate buildings. We don't have additional places, right? That is something need to be addressed so that we can at least, like, Kilma is one example where we can at least construct, at least a temporary tactical place or we can use in a Stilton so that we can address the, the, the overcrowding school, the overcrowding issue in our schools, which is first of all, high school, right? Thirty-eight hundred kids are under one roof, whereas our capacity is only like a 2,000 people, right? That has to be addressed. The quality of education is going down. The people are giving five minutes for even to talk. The slots are not there. Even if you parent teacher conference, if you look at it, five minutes is what it is. By the time I go and say hello, it is done. And for, I mean, I, myself, my speed is like, you know, high school core. We didn't get for the last three times, we didn't get even the, the appointment with the teacher to talk. Counseling, forget about it. I requested it like 90 days. I did not even get a response with my counselor to talk about it, okay? So that's the situation is. Again, it's, it is all, you know, attributes to the, the overcrowding issue, right? My request is, please help us out, okay? So last but not last, thank you for everyone. And I just used my no-six-minute bar for the first time. Appreciate it, you know, for allowing me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Shonda Edwards, 14 Melbourne Street. I'm not sure what the procedures are as far as when you come up to stand. I know you've just eliminated the six minutes. But as an audience member, as a taxpayer in Edison, I'd greatly appreciate it if at least the people who stood up stated their names, even if they don't give their address. At least so we know who is saying whatever it is they're saying, then we can do some fact checking and, you know, just determine for ourselves if there's any hitting the agenda, if there's anything else going on, if we agree with what they're saying, if we don't agree. At least if we have the person's name, we can just check. So if you could not eliminate that when people come up to speak, I'd greatly appreciate it. But whatever you guys do, congratulations for everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. That's it.
Thank you. Oh, pressure. Oh, pressure, you go first. No, no, no. Mr. Brecher.
Although I'd like to congratulate everyone on election and reelections.
Name and address.
Richard Brecher, 868 Grove Avenue, across from the JP Stephen LED sign.
We put that right in front of your house for a reason.
They did. Actually, Gail helped me with that. She did turn down the LED a little bit when she was there.
We'll have to talk to Gail about that.
I'd like to congratulate everyone. And it's nice to see that, you know, you, you picked the leadership for this year and you guys are going to move forward and work together. Since I don't get to come to your meetings too often, I want to know, do you have a committee that's going to deal with your construction? If, if you don't, then I guess Dr. Adrilee and Shannon and Joe, I'd like to meet with you guys separately. In, in just the process that you go through, where you hire an architect, but you don't hire like a, call it a project manager, you can call it an owner's, an engi-, you can call it a owner's rep, but somebody...
Construction management.
Right. And, and the reason why I say Shannon has to be there is, is Shannon was on the board when I was on the board, when we had an issue with something. So she can confirm what happened. But it's just so that we have someone that watches out for our, our interest, really. So if you have a committee, if you guys can let me know. If not, you know, I can meet together with, with a few of you. But I, I'd like to just see you, you know, watch out for the township, that's all. But again, congratulations, everybody. I hope everyone has a wonderful New Year this year, and I hope you're very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. David.
David, five-day court, Edison. First, congratulations to Shannon to be, to have the trust of the residents to be re-elected and now the board president. I know you have the experience and especially you do have the courage to bring the school into the right direction. So hopefully, we're going to see some improvement to make it, the school much better this year. And also, congratulations to Joe, you know, for trying to rerun for the BOE. I know you used to be the BOE member, and thanks for your time to represent us to make the school better. And also, thanks Vishal, you know, to stand out, to be, and congratulations to be re-elect, to be elected this year. And last, appreciated to all of the board members to spend your time to help with running the school. And as a, what I said probably two years ago, I wish all of the board members to work together to bring our school to be a much better school in the coming years. I know like one of the priority for the school in the last several years was overcrowding, and with that one, we comes like all kinds of the issues like what they just mentioned. For the parent meeting with the teachers, we even don't have enough slots. So hopefully, I mean, the whole board members can work together to bring that one into a much better shape. Thanks and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, David.
Matt Revneck, ETA Vice President, 20th Road. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Hopefully, a healthy, prosperous, and productive work here for everyone. Congratulations to the new board members, to the new leadership of the board. As one of the leaders of ETA, hopefully, we'll continue and work well together with both administration and the Board of Ed, the working relationship we've enjoyed for all the years that I know I've been involved. But there's one thing I really got up to speak because I didn't intend to, and that's about the time limit. I don't think anybody up on the board, I believe Mr. Romano was on the board at the time, the 4:30 in the morning meeting that went.
Yes.
I think he was still on the board, correct?
That was me.
And there were many other meetings that went to 1:00, 2:00 in the morning.
Yes.
Giving unlimited time, while I believe the public should have a right to get up here and speak, but unlimited time is dangerous. It can also become again, and as we've seen in board meetings throughout the years, where it's not necessarily always about the Board of Education and the students and the school district, but it gets into things like the council, the mayor's office, the federal government, which is not what we're here for. The other thing is, a lot of times when people come up, they come, we hash the same thing that was said 10 times before it. Now, while you can't, you don't want to prevent anyone from speaking, but at least with some kind of time limit, it does prevent that from happening. I do agree with the rebuttal because a lot of times there's something I get up here or somebody else gets up here and says, you know, and you're not supposed to have understandable interaction with the board members while I'm speaking, the questions sometimes do and sometimes don't get answered at the end. But then when an answer is given, there may be something that came up there where I'd like to get up and, you know, rebut on that for the three minutes. So going with an unlimited time, for example, I think is a path you may not want to go down. That's asking a lot of yourselves as well. You know, we had a board meeting, I guess it was last year, you know, and we had a presentation from the ETA that we walked out. Another board attorney shaking his head at 2:00 in the morning.
Three in the morning.
Three in the morning. Well, one of them was two, I think the other one was three because you also had the insurance companies coming in, you know? And we had to sit around and wait also because of what happened during the meeting and the presentations and everything else. So to conduct business afterward and go in a closed session when you're sitting here till 2:00 in the morning, it's a pretty unreasonable thing to ask of yourselves also. So I think you want to consider that. You know, if you don't feel six minutes is enough, make it seven minutes or eight minutes. The rebuttal I don't disagree with, but you got to have some kind of time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. No first timers, Venkatesh?
Yeah, I agree with that. First timers, let's continue with six minutes. Then the rebuttal, then you could extend to six minutes or 10 minutes so that at least everybody can get six minutes. I agree with that. But obviously, like ETAs and others, we don't get opportunity to meet you in private and in person. So obviously, the public would like to get enough time, whether it is the direct one or in the rebuttal time, at least help us to make sure that we get enough time. So... And my name is Venkatesh. I'm not going to share my address because there are enough cheerleaders and bullies from the mayor and MCDO who would like to send the season decision orders. So I'm not here to share my address, and it is not a law as well. If you guys make a policy, then I'll counter that accordingly. I'm telling Venkatesh, Edison, that's all. So you have some ex-BOE members coming from non-Edison talking about, without sharing. So obviously, then I have to ask that, oh, give Edison people first priority instead of non-Edison people. That's not fair as well. So Vishal, apologies. I didn't congratulate you twice I came here earlier. So congratulations. And I think a small, Shannon, it's an observation, maybe, you know, a challenge for you. Jerry has saved under his leadership, obviously you guys were there with him, more than $30 million. The last year board le-, they did the first 0% increase of tax. They are the first one who saved with the insurance and a lot of other stuff. I'm not worried here to talk about pros and cons. The amount of $30 million plus that this board has seen under his leadership, and they are able to talk about, hey, JP and other schools are new school. The last year board was able to spend that money, most of it, on the vendors without doing anything, and in fact, they have stolen everything from the students. So I know that you are up for helping people to get the physics in the 10th grade, opening more APs. I am sure that, as Eljibat said, you guys will not run the board, school, but at least you work with the administration to make sure that open up those APs, honors, all the stuff. So now my challenge to you is, Jerry's leadership has delivered $30 million plus. The last year board did nothing, and I want you to, can you beat 31? 35. So please save more money so that we can use that money for the better school infrastructure, better pay structures to the people, or the better facilities, better amenities. We don't need to look for anybody else. Obviously, anybody from the county and the state level gives funding, fantastic, but I think you guys need to make it self-sufficient and to put the pressure on the next year. And I think bar is higher, but not at the cost of losing the basic necessities. Please continue to have the same, and let's take this as a challenge. I think at the end of the year, we can reevaluate. But I wish you all the best, I Joe, and I'm sure that with your experience, there is a three, three-time BOE members, and I'm sure that you guys will be able to carry this boat successfully without, depending on the county and the council. And last but not least, I think tomorrow is the council meeting. Hopefully, Mr. B will be the president over there so that you guys can partner in a trusting manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board President, can I just say something?
Sure.
Venkatesh, we do want our fair share of funding from the state and the county. We will take every penny that they have taken from us. We'll gladly accept it. So we are not the ATM machine for them. We're going to start taking our funds out a little bit more. Thank you.
Anybody else, any more comments? Let's see now.
Motion to close public comments?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion. You want to join the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, you can join. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you so much.